The Tuesday, December 1st, 2020, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I read the open podium invitation, just maybe a word about tonight's council meeting. We have, as many of you know, had various formats for council meetings in this COVID environment. We've been totally virtual at different times. Back in the earlier days, we've tried some hybrid formats, but never technologically. So this is the first meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council where we're truly running a hybrid, where some of us are here in the council chambers, and Councilmember Nelson is streaming in live from home, and then we have staff, I believe, all over as well. So going forward, just to be very clear, we're paying very close attention to the COVID environment, and we're carefully weighing what's going to happen in January and February. Possibly, we will be all virtual by that point, and then watch again carefully as the months go by. Various cities around us are doing different formats and models. We're all trying to do what's best to keep our public safe and to keep all of us safe. So again, if our IT people are amazing, so thank you, but if there are some little glitches tonight, just know that we're working this through, and we've got experts in charge. I'm sure glad I'm not of the technology department. Quick invitation for open podium. And again, when we get back to normal, where people are comfortable coming into our council chambers, they'll be able to participate with open podium, which is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie City government prior to each council meeting, which are typically held the first and third Tuesday of each month. This open podium occurs from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter. If time does permit, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Tonight, we will be setting the levy budget, approving that for the 2021 year, and as a piece of that, we have what's called an HRA, for Housing Redevelopment Authority. I think I missed that a couple of months ago. What am I going to do without you, Councilmember Aho? You always kind of fill me in when those little glitches occur. But we're going to serve as the HRA tonight. Various cities do it differently. Some have an HRA separate commission. We, the city council, serve as our HRA. So I'm going to open up an HRA meeting within the city council meeting. So I will call the HR meeting to order. We need a formal roll call, correct?
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, that was a little test run there, and it worked. So the first order of business in our HRA meeting is to approve the minutes of our HRA meeting held the last one, which was on September 15th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the HRA minutes from September 15th, 2020.
I second that.
Great. I was going to say let Councilmember Aho do all the motions and seconds, but I don't think that's possible. So we'll just let you speak up as much as you want here. Any items to question, or anything that you want to comment on? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, passes unanimously.
Actually, I think we might have to do that as a roll call.
Oh, do we need a roll call on? No, we do not. Okay. So the roll call is simply for attendance. Got it.
But because we're remote, sometimes, when you have remote, you have to do a roll call.
Okay. I'm going to keep looking at our attorney just to double-check here, but everything okay there?
Yes, you should do all your votes by roll call, under the statute that allows interactive meetings.
So let's redo that vote as a roll call vote. So roll call. If you could speak up just a little bit, I know that there's no amplification within the room, but there is out for the people watching this.
Okay. Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. So the motion to approve the minutes passes. So now, our only order of, what, we have two items of business? Sorry about that. Mr. Geto, would you like to take it from here?
Yes, thank you, members of the HRA. I think our recorder just realized she's going to be busy tonight. Maybe I'll have to get you a bottle of water or something. You're going to be pretty busy. So two items. As you mentioned, Mayor, we have the approval of the budget for 2021 for the HRA, something that was preliminarily set in September. That's the same situation with our regular budget. We will have a public hearing and a presentation on the entire city budget. We'll also ask you during the council meeting to affirm this HRA vote, so you'd be voting on this twice. But this is for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority approving a tax levy and budget of $200,000. And as was mentioned at the September meeting, where you approved the preliminary budget, these are costs that are affiliated with staff time as it relates to Housing and Redevelopment Authority activities.
All right. Counsel, any questions you have of this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution certifying the 2021 HRA property tax levy to be $200,000 and approving the 2021 HRA budget of $200,000, as reviewed by the council.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those, oop, roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. And again, if you're listening from home, and you're wondering why we're doing all these roll calls, it's because when you have hybrid meetings and/or virtual meetings, it's evidently statutory law that every voice needs to be heard in terms of a vote. So we'll be doing the roll call throughout every single motion this evening. So we do have one more item. Mr. Geto, in the HRA meeting.
Yes, thank you, members of the HRA. This is a housekeeping item for tax increment District 23. This is the tax increment district for the Trail Point Ridge project, part of Smith Village, Eden Prairie Road, Highway 212. When that TIF district was created previously last year, I think it was, there was an error in the documents that were recorded that five tax identification numbers, or PID numbers, were included in the district that we need to clean up and remove and fix the boundary of the district. So the motion is to modify the plan and change the boundaries of the district to remove those five parcels.
Which is fairly housekeeping.
Absolutely.
Counsel, any questions, however? If not, I would entertain a motion. And you don't have to wait for Councilmember Aho, but...
Go ahead, jump in, somebody.
All right. I would move to adopt a modification to the Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing District Number 23, Trail Point Ridge, changing the boundary of the TIF district to remove parcels that are not part of the Trail Point Ridge project.
I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say, oop, roll call. I caught it that time, a little bit late, but...
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Before I adjourn the HRA, I just want to comment that this line item, which impacts people's taxes, this $200,000, which goes towards special housing initiatives across the city, has been $200,000 for as long as I remember. I believe it's over 20 years. We've not raised it. So it has a 0% impact on your increases in taxes, and it's an item that we've kept the same. Some have even questioned, why don't we add to it? And part of that reason is that we have funding sources that have been adequate so far to support that. If indeed, at some point, we needed that for future affordable housing initiatives or something, we would certainly look at that. But just a comment that that has stayed the same now for two decades. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting that's within the normal city council meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Sir, second?
Second.
Any, Councilmember Nelson, you're going to have to jump right in there, because I think there's a delay on your recording there. So you're going to get beat out if we don't at least defer to you a couple of times. So it's been seconded, I believe, by Councilmember Norrion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oop, roll call. You're good. It's just so in me, right? This is obviously a learned muscle memory behavior. Please, roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. This meeting, the HRA, is adjourned, then. All right. Let's move now back into the regular council meeting. We have no proclamations and presentations during this part of the meeting. Moving on to the agenda, anybody want to add any items to the agenda? Councilmember Aho?
I would just add that under Councilmember Reports, I'd like to give a brief 30-minute report.
All right. I'm going to piggyback on the back of that, and I'll cut you off at some point and put mine in there. So I will add a small part to that as well. So any other items to add to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the additions?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. So we do have three minutes this evening. If we don't have any reason to question them individually, we could put them together in one motion. The three of them, a special meeting we held, I believe that was the certification of the vote, okay? There were three of us here for that. And then we have the workshop held on the, that was on the 13th. Then we have a workshop and a council meeting held on the 17th. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of all three council meetings?
I move to approve the following city council minute. The special city council meeting held Friday, November 13th, 2020. Council workshop held Tuesday, November 17th, 2020. City council meeting held Tuesday, November 17th, 2020.
Sir, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Passes unanimously again. So the consent calendar, any items that you wish to pull, question, ask more questions about? I think that's redundant. Any that you want to talk about otherwise? Is there a motion? Councilmember Nelson, would you like to make a motion? Just to give you a chance to speak up there. If you'd like to make a motion on the consent calendar, that would be great. Proving items, aye to aye.
I move the consent calendar as aye to aye as presented.
Sir, second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, oop, roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. Kathy, you should be hearing us better there. I believe a mic was off. I'm not sure. If not, we'll keep working at that. All right, we do have a couple of public hearings this evening, so I think I'll just turn it right over to city manager, Mr. Geto.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as is customary for the last meeting of the year, we have a few public meetings, public hearings. The first of which is to approve first and second reading of our ordinance for our fee schedule for 2021. These are broken into two different areas, and so I'll cover the first. And the first has to do with fees that are established by city ordinance. And many of those fees, and they're all listed in the packet, are related to building permits, and development fees, and land use permit fees that come to the city that are established by city code. And so we published notice of this public hearing, and put out our proposed fees in our packet and on our website. And we asked that you hold a public hearing, and then you would take action on a first and second reading to approve those fees set by ordinance for 2021.
All right. Counsel, let's go ahead and have this as a public hearing. If you have questions, then we can ask later on. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to speak to this agenda item, which is the first, well, it's the ordinance approving 2021 fee schedules? Counsel?
I would move to close the public hearing and approve the first and second readings of the ordinance updating the fee schedule for administrative, administration of official controls, and adopt resolution approving the summary for publication.
Sir, second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion, Counsel? I guess I'd make just one comment, that sometimes we do get questions on the fees that we set, or are they too high, or are they reasonable? And we work really hard both to have them be reasonable, obviously legal, they have to actually apply to the cost of whatever the work that's being done, or whatever's being asked the fee to cover. But also, they're similar to other cities. We don't hang out there as a less charge or a greater charge. So just a comment on that. So if there's no further discussion, then roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Okay, the second fee resolution, Mr. Geto.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. So these are the fees that we establish by resolution. They're not in city code or city ordinance. These are many of, you know, what we'll call our business fees, or fees for service. So if you think about all of our park and recreation programming, our memberships to our community center, our rental costs at our city facilities, our costs for our cemetery plots at our cemetery, many of our police and fire administrative fees. And as you said, Mayor, we need to recover costs related to those fees, but we also are very careful to look out for the taxpayer in recovering these fees, and make sure that we're not out of line with our peers. So that's a really good point. So again, these are all the lists of fees for our fee schedule that are not established by ordinance and are done by resolution, and are many of our program fees.
Great. Counsel, I'll go ahead and open up as a public hearing, then, and we can question things later. This is, I mean, a public, just a second, yep, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the counsel on this item? Counsel? Your pleasure. Do you want to make a motion, somebody?
I move to close the public hearing and adopt the 2021 fee resolution.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Counsel, any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Norrion?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. Resolution approving the capital improvement plan, which, before I throw it to you there, I'll just say that, and maybe you were going to say this, but we've done a lot of work on this. Sometimes it looks like we're just approving these, and we're just coming right before us and going away fast. But we've had a lot of different meetings on this, including recently within the last two meetings, right? So, Mr. Geto.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We do spend quite a bit of time in workshop on this. And, you know, as a quick introduction, our finance manager is going to give more of a detailed presentation, so I don't want to take away from her presentation. This is something that we do every two years, and it covers 10 years' worth of city capital costs on pretty much every single city capital item over $20,000. So you, as a council, know how much time we spend forecasting out and planning, really, all of our spending in the city. So yeah, as you said, you know, we've already prepared a draft plan here, and we will publish this entire plan on our city website upon approval at a later date. But I do know that our finance manager, Sukhachiver, has a presentation to give an overview prior to public hearing. Or actually, we're not required to have a public hearing, but we'll take public comment and prior to action.
And before Ms. Kachiver speaks, just a quick comment, that this is a plan, and every item 20,000 or over, or over 20,000, has to come back to us. So future councils will get the chance to look at these individually, but we need to be organized and planned out, and that's what this is about. Ms. Kachiver?
Good evening, your honor, councilmembers, staff, folks at home watching. I'm pleased to present an update of the city's proposed 2021 to 2030 capital improvement plan. Well, that's what's showing up there. All right. The purpose of the meeting is to provide, as we said, information on the plan, and to give folks opportunity to provide feedback. And as Rick mentioned, at the end of the meeting, we'll be asking you to adopt the plan. The plan, the objective is to plan for our capital maintenance, oh, thank you, and provide consistent investment in our infrastructure, so we don't just kind of do it as we go along. We planned out the funding sources and how we're going to accomplish achieving the projects that we want to complete, and to preserve and expand our capital that's affordable for citizens. And a few of our capital policies include we prefer not to issue debt, but when we need to for larger projects. We do issue debt, and we only issue the debt for the length of the service of the asset, or less. We maintain relationships with our two bond rating agencies. We always are providing them financial updates of the city, and they check in with us once a year. And of course, when we issue debt, we spend lots of time with them. And we do maintain a plan. And we dedicate our liquor profits to the capital improvement plan, and that's approximately $800,000 a year or more that we put into our plan. So this gives you kind of the big picture of our capital improvement plan. Our 2021 to 2030 capital improvement plan is $299 million. And you can see that compares to the last plan of $295 million. So it's very consistent. We do a good job of keeping a good list of all our assets, and then ensuring that we're maintaining them, and we add to our system as appropriate. Gives you a summary of the value of the projects by division. You can see that utilities, engineering, and water utility makes up a substantial part of our assets, because that's for our road infrastructure and our water utility infrastructure. So those are big assets that are quite costly. Park and maintenance is another large area. And I'll cover some of these other departments in some of the other slides coming up. And this is a summary of the funding. And one of the larger funding sources is the pavement management fund, and that's about $50 million. And we pay, the majority of the financing for that fund comes from a franchise fee that's charged on monthly utility bills, energy bills, to citizens. We use that to pay for our pavement management program. And then some other big sources are municipal state aid and the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and there's $17 million in there from the federal government. So again, a lot of financing for our infrastructure and our roadway system. And then the capital maintenance and reinvestment fund, that's the fund that pays for everything that doesn't have a funding source. That's where the liquor profit goes. We have some rental income in there, antenna revenue. There's a $400,000 tax levy that goes into there. So that's a big fund that pays for a lot of our capital. Oh, sorry, I'm not speaking into the mic. All righty. So this is our, just wanted to then just give update of some of the projects that are coming up in the next couple of years, or some of the larger projects. So for transportation, and I think it's 2021, is Sina Heights Road for $1.4 million, and then Dell Road of $8.1 million in 2022 and 2023, and then Duck Lake Road for $3.6 million in 2021, and then the largest transportation project for $24 million. And that's where the $17 million of federal funding is going is the county road state aid one, but that's not until '28 or '29. And then utility infrastructure, the ground storage reservoir and pump station, that's a $9.5 million project, a very large and exciting project. That project's almost done. We've got a bit of spending yet for 2021, and then that will be complete. The water meter changeout program, that's going to be approximately a $6 million project, and we will issue debt for that next year. And that will be large. It will be a changeout of every meter in every building in the city, and it should be updated technology that will make it more efficient for staff, and also able for citizens and folks to be able to monitor their water usage on their own more readily and easily. And then there's also some funds in there for Wells 17 and 18. This is very difficult. All righty. Pavement management fund, so there's about $46 million for pavement management, and that's big. It's to maintain our 235 miles of streets, overlay seal coats, under seals, et cetera, and then reconstruction of our streets. So we'll spend a lot of work on our streets in the summer. Parks and recreation, so that an exciting new project will be the Miller Park Indoor Court Facility. That's $2.9 million in 2023. Also, reconstruction of the Ron Lake Park Building for $1.3 million in 2022, and $300,000 for the Nesbit Preserve Park Splash Pad, and that's in 2022 as well. And then we spend, we invest quite a bit each year in the play equipment replacement, trail maintenance, hard court maintenance, and then also funds into new streets and sidewalks, or new trails and sidewalks. Public safety, so there's some funds in there for radio replacement, $1.4 million from 2023 to 2027. There are six fire engines that will be replaced from 2023 to 2026 for $4.9 million. Those are also projects that we will be issuing debt for. And there's a ladder truck also in 2027 for $1.5 million. The mobile command center for the police at about $475,000 in 2026, and then a police remodel in the budget in 2025 for $13 million. Then last but not least, we have this new department this year we call Sustainability. Not that we haven't done those projects in the past, but just trying to call them out a little bit more. We have about $4.4 million in that category, which includes the Miller Park light conversion, electric vehicle charging stations, LED lighting for, that includes for the city center and the community center, and a few other projects listed there. And that's, oh, and last but not least, for those that don't know, we receive a AAA bond rating from Moody's Investor Service and Standards &amp; Poor, and that is the best rating that we can receive, which helps to ensure lowest interest rates possible when we're issuing debt. So it basically saves us money. And that's attributable to, Eden Prairie always has a very strong economy. We have strong budget flexibility with reserves, good budget performance, strong liquidity. We have strong management conditions. We get comments regularly about how well the city council works with city staff throughout the whole city to keep them, everything working well, and getting things accomplished that are important for our citizens with not a lot of distractions, I guess. are important for our citizens with not a lot of distractions, I guess. And we have a good, strong debt position driven by low debt, and we pay it off rather timely. So that's what I have prepared. If there's any questions or...
Counsel, sorry, counsel, any questions? All right, this is not a public hearing. If there was, I'm just looking in the audience, and it looks like there's no random residents that hopped or jumped into the meeting. So if, unless I'm missing somebody, counsel, I would entertain a motion then to adopt the resolution approving this plan.
I would move to adopt the resolution approving the 2021 to 2030 capital improvement plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those, oop, roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor, please.
You're on. Yep.
Mayor, take it.
Yeah, aye.
And then, did you say my name?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do.
Aye. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, our last, I'm not calling this a public hearing necessarily, but nonetheless, our last item under this agenda item, Mr. Gettrill. And I'll lead back to Ms., no, Mr. Gettrill first.
I'll introduce, Mayor, yes. And this actually is a public hearing. Notice was given to every taxpayer in the city of Eden Prairie for this meeting tonight at this location, in the tax statements that everybody received. And the finance supervisor, Tammy Wilson, and I will both provide a presentation on the 2021 budget and tax levy. And Tammy will begin the presentation, and I will come in halfway through and wrap it up. And then we will have a public hearing and a request for council action.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council for allowing me to present tonight. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the 2021 budget and property tax levy, and it's to solicit public input, and it is a requirement by state statute, and it must be held after property owners have received their 2021 property tax statements. So some of the highlights of what we'll be discussing tonight are the city's budget of $53 million, the tax levy of $38.7 million, the city's market value of $11.4 billion, and the city tax rate of 31.34%. So the city prepares a two-year budget, and the budget that we are presenting tonight is the second year of that two-year budget. And so the $53 million budget that we are proposing tonight is the same as what was brought forward last year, and also the same that was proposed at the September 15th council meeting. We are bringing the budget forward again tonight because it is required by state law that each year the council approves the budget in the year that it is for. I'm also pleased to present that we have a balanced budget, which means that the general fund revenues equal the general fund expenditures. And so for 2021, we are proposing a $1.4 million or 3% increase. Taxes are increasing approximately 1.3% or $1.3 million or 3.8%. Licenses and permits are remaining relatively flat, and this line item is made up mainly of building permit revenues. The city, when they prepare a two-year budget, in the first year, we usually increase the fees for building permits, and then in the second year, we keep it relatively flat. And so last year, that line item had increased for fees by approximately 6%. For intergovernmental revenue, that line item is staying flat, and that line item consists mainly of police and fire, state aid, and grants. Charges for services are increasing approximately $137,000. This line consists mainly of park and rec revenues. We have not changed this line item due to COVID, and we do know that for 2020, we are anticipating a shortfall because of the governor's stay-at-home orders and due to park and rec programs being canceled. We anticipate a $1.3 to $1.5 million shortfall, but in June, we did receive approximately $4.7 million of CARES Act funding to help with the public safety wages and benefits. And so with this, we feel that we can manage our finances to cover this crisis. And then for other revenues, that is decreasing approximately $59,000, and this line item is made up mainly of fines and investment income. And so we're just decreasing it just to be more in line with what our investment rates are coming in at and our fines. So this graph is just showing the breakdown of the general fund revenues. As you can see, property taxes are at 74%, licenses and permits, 8%, intergovernmental revenue, 3%, charges for services, 13%, and other revenue at 2%. So as I had mentioned earlier, our general fund revenues equal our general fund expenditures. So our expenditures are at $50 million, which is a $1.4 million increase or 3%. With the budget that we are proposing, we were able to maintain city services, and also the city is a very service-oriented organization, and approximately 62% of the budget is made up of wages and benefits. And so this budget does include a 3.8% increase for wages, and it includes a 3% base increase and also one additional police officer for the last half of the year. For health insurance, the city usually goes out for requests for bids, and we do a five-year bid proposal. And the last time we went out was, out for bid was in 2017, and that would cover the years 2018 through 2022. With that proposal, we were able to lock in some caps for each year, and for 2021, that cap for health insurance was at 9%. The good news is the individual cap came in at 5.95%. So the budget that we are proposing does include a 7% increase for health insurance, and that includes that 5.95% rate increase, and then approximately an additional 1% for employee turnover and for city staff changing between plans. We also do have a reduction in the budget of approximately $125,000 for elections due to 2021 being a non-election year. So this following chart just shows a breakdown of the general fund expenditures by department. So police is at 33%, park and rec 27%, and fire and public works are both at approximately 13%, administration 9%, and community development at 5%. But for the debt levy, we were able to maintain our debt levy from in prior years, and that's at $2.5 million. And the last time this levy was increased was in 2017. So based off of the 2021 budget that we are proposing, the city's property tax levy for 2021 would be $38.7 million, which is a 1.2 million or 3.2% increase. So a median value home, which is valued at $415,800, for the city's tax portion would have a tax of $1,335, which is a $4 or 0.3% decrease over last year. For an apartment with a $5 million value, their city portion tax would be $19,974. This is a $1,068 increase or 5.7%. For commercial property with a $2 million value, their city tax would be $7,948, which is a $265 increase or 3.4%. So for the overall city, or for the overall property tax, this would include the city, the school district, the county, the state, and other jurisdictions. A median value home would pay $5,079, which is a $165 decrease or 3.1%. For apartments, the total tax would be $73,730 or an increase of $1,911 or a 2.7% increase. And for commercial, the tax would be $63,012, which is a $2,492 or 3.8% decrease. So this slide just kind of shows the breakdown of how that total property tax is divided, and so the city would receive 26% of that total property tax for a median value home. The school district would receive 35%, the county 31%, and other taxing jurisdictions And for commercial property, the city would receive, oops, 13%? Sorry. Yep, 13 to... The state 21%, school district 15%, fiscal disparities would receive 32%, other jurisdictions 4%, and the county 15%. So now if we switch back again to just the city's portion of the tax, a median value home on a monthly basis would pay approximately $111 per month, with approximately $105 going to the general fund and $6 going to the debt and capital fund. So then if you broke down that $105 going to the general fund, approximately $35 would go to police, $28 to parks, $13 to public works, $13 to fire, $9 to admin, and $5 to community development. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gettrill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. I would like to, I think Tammy did a great job of going through all the numbers in detail. And I, and as you think about, you know, there are a couple key numbers, and I'll get to them later, and it really needs to be emphasized with this budget, that we're talking about a decrease in our city tax rate. We're talking about a decrease in taxes with a median-valued home, and that's with a median-valued home that went up in value. So the home increased in value, the taxes are still decreasing. I know we're talking about dollars, just a few dollars, but they're decreasing. What I'd like to do really quickly is maybe do a little bit of story behind some of the numbers, a little bit of narrative behind what goes into the monthly cost of services that Sue talked about and how we built our budget. And so you, city councilmembers, know that this is a two-year process, as was mentioned at the very outset. And this really begins very early on in the first year of the two-year budget with a review of our community survey and several different workshops related to our goals and our strategic planning, and a lot of different ideas that come out of our work plans that then build a budget, in a two-year budget over a period of time, which culminates in this meeting tonight. So if you look back, and it's almost time for our next survey, but the survey that this two-year budget was built on early on is a snapshot in time about what our residents think about this community and what they would like to see. A statistically significant valid survey that said that our residents rate us as one of the best cities to live and raise a family in the entire United States. And you may remember, you know, it was not quite two years ago that you got a report from a national survey company that benchmarked us very highly against similar suburbs throughout the entire country, in that our services are praised throughout the community, and that's something that the council felt we need to build a budget that continues that sentiment, but in a way that's very cost-effective. Public safety is a highlight. It's very important. It contributes to the quality of life, and our city is very known as a premier park and recreation natural environment community. Lastly, our economy is doing well, at least, you know, 19 into 20, but housing affordability is an issue. And I'll talk about how you went forward and put a task force together on that. So the goals that we have for this budget are the same as the last budget, and there are actually six overarching goals, that we like to call them, that the council approved, I think it was four or five years ago. And I'm just going to talk about a couple different areas where you budgeted to meet these goals. So in the area of community well-being and safety, you put together a housing task force that evaluated affordable housing options and plans in our community, and you're going to implement that. As Tammy mentioned, we've actually bolstered our public safety, our fire duty crew and our officers in Eden Prairie, so we've committed to public safety, and we've committed to transportation, and we've committed to our bike and trail system, adding to that and maintaining it. In the area of high-quality, efficient services, we spend a lot of bit of, a lot of time looking at technology and how we can improve our operations without increasing our cost, but also retaining a high-quality workforce, and a workforce that is supportive and passionate about where they work, and also kind of working in different areas with our youth and our senior populations in Eden Prairie as well. So again, I think I'm probably repeating this when I talk about, the big piece of this is maintaining high-quality services at a very reasonable tax impact. As Sue mentioned, back in the CIP presentation, I won't go over that, how we are AAA rated, very, very well-regarded city in terms of our finances, our capital planning, our fund balances, our budget policies, and finance policies. Another goal in Eden Prairie, which is somewhat specific to us, is a preserved and beautiful environment, and that relates to our public spaces, and our urban forests, and our trails, and our parks, and our historic properties. So we put some time and effort into maintaining and promoting our historic properties and the overall appearance of our city. We get some of the highest ratings nationally on the appearance of our city and the maintenance of our city. In terms of sense of community, this is an area that the council has been wanting to see the community ratings increase, and I think we've seen that. I think obviously this is that one area where COVID really hit us. If you look at how we were not able to have a people fest and a hometown celebration in person, and some of the different events in 2020 that we had to put off, we did, our staff was very creative in finding different events that were virtual or dealt with you being in a vehicle or socially distant, we found a way to make that work. I'd like to predict that in, you know, this coming summer in '21 and in the fall of '21, we want to plan for activities and events that, events that are more pre-COVID. We'll have to see kind of what, where the pandemic takes us, but we have hope that we're going to get back to many of the events that we've always had. But we can be flexible, we can be adaptive, and we will do that as needed. So again, as you see, we take pride in our events and also our engagement. We have, we've had a very successful city government academy for the last two or three years. We've had a long-running police academy, but we also have a city government academy that we want to get back off the ground. And I would say that we have at least two or three or four different tools of civic engagement that we were already doing virtually that probably fit the pandemic environment. Second-last goal has to do with being innovative and sustainable, and I think we've done that in all areas of our operations, whether it's our utilities, our streets, our fleets. Sue, again, talked in the CIP about our plans for electrification, our plans for energy savings and water savings, and we also have been very active in solar programs. And solar programs that don't cost us dollars to spend on, they only provide us savings. They actually reduce our budget. And then finally, economic vitality. We want to be a very vital city with our businesses and our economic activity and some of... and, and some of what we're doing in our budget is meant to maintain that, and our, our traction of businesses, our business retention programs, our support of business growth, so we have that built in the budget as well. So as, as you've seen, uh, in our two-year budget process, we're looking at a budget for the coming year that's actually below a three percent increase, and a levy that's slightly above three percent, with the tax impact, as I mentioned earlier, that could actually decrease for a median valued home, and is also very competitive with our neighbors. As you can see, when you look at this list of similar, uh, communities, we are in that lower, uh, tier, the, the fourth lowest of similar-sized cities in terms of our tax rate. And if you look at cities around us, what they're proposing for a levy this coming year, we are lower than the average. The average amongst those communities, and they, this could change with their final approval, this isn't their final levy, uh, w- we're a good percent and a half almost below our neighbor's average. And then finally, I just want to really quickly mention, this could be a whole meeting in and of itself, a whole workshop could be devoted to fiscal disparities. But the one comment I want to make is, in the metropolitan area, there's a tax-based sharing program for commercial property taxes. Because that program exists, Eden Prairie is the third-largest contributor to the program, which means, and it's just a matter of, of transparency, information that I want to share, because we are a contributor, because that program exists, our residential taxpayers pay about seven percent more in their property taxes than if that program did not exist. And so I, I'm not passing judgment on the program, it has to do with how there's the concept of pooling the growth in commercial development in the whole metro area, uh, there might be a benefit to that. We haven't seen many other metropolitan areas in the United States pick up on that program, so we have lobbied, uh, with the state legislature with our concerns in that program, but at least for now, I just want to mention that that does affect our taxes, uh, e- even though they stay in, in the lower portion. And then the last couple of slides I have relate to our market value. We continue to see a growth in our property value, and, and we'd like to say that if we put our city up for sale, the, the entire community up for sale, I think we would get, um, close to eleven billion dollars i- in terms of the value of property in our community, which is a, a positive factor. And again, this is a, a slide that just shows that overview again of the budget, the tax levy, our market value, and our decreasing tax rate, um, again with an outcome that we think maintains a very high level of services to all of our residents and all of our businesses in Eden Prairie.
Thank you.
So for the presentation portion, Mayor, that's all that we have, but we can certainly answer any questions that the council may have a staff, and then we, we do have to have a public hearing.
Right, great. Thank you, Mr. Getchell. Uh, council, what would you prefer? Have the public hearing opened and then close it, and then if we have any further comments? Okay. This is a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience, um, who wishes to address us, please come forward. And I might add, for those listening from home, because it's a hybrid meeting, uh, state statute says that we needed to give opportunity to people at home, but that they needed to have called in or let us know, and no one did. I just want to let the council members know that, that we did avail that opportunity to others. Anyone in this room wishing to, uh, address the council on the certifying twenty-twenty-one property tax levy? Okay, uh, seeing none, why don't we close that portion of? Is there a motion to, I know that's two roll calls, that's okay, though, uh, is there a motion to close that, just the public hearing part of this?
I would move to close the public hearing.
Sir, second. Second roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye.
All right, um, I'll let any of you ask questions or add comments, I just will say that a lot of good numbers here, and our staff has done a phenomenal job during a very difficult year. The federal dollars were a help, uh, so thank you to the CARES Act, um, but it was also the management, um, of our staff that, uh, really, uh, created this situation where we were ending the year in, uh, pretty good shape and entering twenty-twenty-one, we don't know what twenty-twenty-one holds, we're of course all optimistic. But council, anything else you want to ask questions on or comment on, anything? Councilmember Narayan.
I'd just make a comment, I think is, this is like you said, Mayor, this is a true result of the, our staff working hard, and, you know, if we just highlight AAA bond rating, we are the fourth lowest tax rate city, um, now our property value is going up, and all this happening, good things happening to city while the COVID-nineteen, and we manage all that without major heartache. So, so really, thank you, city manager, and Sue and the staff really managing this hard time in, in a real way.
And, and just one comment, uh, did you want to say something? And just one comment about, um, budgets. I remember twenty-four years ago, when I was first elected, going to a meeting and being told that there is no better reflection of the personality of a community and nor the representatives on the council that represent that community than the budget. I mean, the budget represents a community's principles, its passion, and most importantly, its values. So we take the budget very seriously, and it really is, if you want to look back over Brad Aho's sixteen great years on the council and know what he stood for and what he represented on the councils with him, look at the budget, that, that represents this council, and then of course the staff that implements it. So, um, council, anything else, or somebody wish to make a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution certifying the twenty-twenty-one property tax levy to be forty-one million, forty-one zero one four four nine oh. That's a lot of numbers. Approve the twenty-twenty-one budget fifty-three million fifty-five four seven four as reviewed by the council, and approve the HRA tax levy budget of two hundred thousand dollars.
Sir, second. Second.
Second.
Any further conversation? Roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, budget passed unanimously. All right, payment of claims, um, is there, are any items that anyone wishes to question or, um, call, pull out for a moment? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
Move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Sir, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, if you're, um, happen to be watching the agenda here, we're going to, um, talk about the city manager review, we're going to put off the reports of council members till the end, so we'll go the city manager review, and then we'll go into the, uh, talk about the contract for consulting services, and then we'll go into, um, council member reports, if that's okay, if, um, if I can have that, um, point of privilege here to change that order. All right, um, city manager review, I'm actually going to read a, a statement here, and I just want to add, uh, before I do that, that, uh, many of you know that there are different types of cities in the state of Minnesota. Uh, one is a charter city that actually writes their own charter, kind of writes their own constitution, but about, um, ninety percent of all the other cities, uh, go by the state constitution that was basically, um, initiated back in eighteen fifty-eight, and they establish these statutory cities, that's what we are. So sometimes people wonder, why don't you do wards, or why don't you, um, you know, run your elections in odd years, or whatever, we can't do that, because we're a statutory city and we're beholden to the statutory law. Within that, we're statutory Plan B city, and that means that we hire a city manager to do our bidding. Plan A cities are small cities out west that maybe have eight hundred people, and their council decides the color of the fire engine, but we don't. We hire a city manager, we hire and fire, we don't fire, just relax, I know you looked up on that.[1146.26][1146.26](laughing) We hire and fire, though, we're responsible to hire one person, that's our city manager, and then he or she goes out and hires the three hundred full-time and up to seven hundred and I think part-time employees who go out and do the work, do the bidding, and, and fulfill the policies of the city council. With that in mind, then, we, um, have an annual review of our one employee, and at that time, we establish salaries. Um, due to, um, things that were occurring in twenty-twenty, uh, which you can only imagine, uh, we did not, we, we ended up having to actually do two years of salaries and retroactively backpay it. So let me read, um, a statement that, um, our attorney assisted with us with this, and then if any council members want to add anything, they certainly can. "We had a closed session," uh, which is legal under statutory law because it was, uh, dealing with an employee, "we had a closed session," and these are the, uh, public, uh, notes that I'm allowed to read about that closed session regarding the evaluation of our city manager, and we held that back on November seventeenth, twenty-twenty. "The city manager's contract provides for this performance review by the city council in conjunction with salary review." We held it back on November seventeenth. Uh, "Human Resources and Administrative Services Director Alicia Rose explained that Mr. Getchell was to ha- have been reviewed back in twenty-twenty, but the review was postponed because of COVID. Mr. Getchell did attend the first part of our session back on the seventeenth. He provided his own self-eva- evaluation, he listed his goals that he had attained as being responsible for the twenty-twenty-one budget process, maintaining the city's AAA bond rating, efforts at employee engagement, the hiring of a new fire chief in mid-two thousand nineteen, which, um, I think Chief, he did rather well at that, I, would you agree? I, I, I do, but you're supposed to nod here. Um, good job. Uh, S, uh, the Southwest LRT Construction Housing Task Force, Sustainable Eden Prairie Initiatives, Department Work Plans, several major projects, developments that began or were completed, I think we have more, uh, cranes in the city than at any time in history, and that's, I'm absolutely sure of that. Um, all kinds of new projects starring like park buildings, Smith Village, Applewood Point, senior housing, um, Elevate, Newcastle Ridge Senior Housing, Castle Ridge Retail, Paravell, Shields redevelopment, it goes on and on, because we've had so much really positive economic growth in our city. Mr. Getchell explained that much of the past six, nine months have been very challenging due to COVID, work has been much more difficult due to employees having to work remotely, especially police, fire, public works. He typically is the kind of person, and we appreciate this about him, who likes to connect with employees on a personal level, this has been really hard to do during COVID. He attributes the continuing employee engagement, though, to the great management team, uh, that I, I give him credit for putting together, I know, um, he would, um, say that as well, but we certainly, um, uh, respect him for that and thank him for that, including the, uh, department directors and managers who have good relationships with the employees that they work with. "They have also held remote all-employee meetings, despite these challenges, city service delivery has not yet been affected," and we hear that from our residents, how really good things have continued to be this year. "We are making the best of where the city is at in terms of finances, development, workforce, et cetera, and Eden Prairie is doing better than many of its peers." Mr. Getchell then left the meeting, and we, the city council, considered and discussed his performance. Uh, we as council members had, had individually completed an evaluation of Mr. Getchell online, the evaluate, and then we got to see the results of every one, the evaluation of his most significant contributions and accomplishments during the last year, and they include, this is from the council, individual council comments, "Guiding the city through COVID issues, keeping the city both quiet and respectful during the George Floyd tragedy, a successful election with eighty-nine percent voter turnout, managing the city budget well while still providing a high level of city service, good communications, maintaining a sense of stability and confidence in local government during a tumultuous twenty-twenty. Council members all praise Mr. Getchell's strong communication and management skills, he should continue, we recommended to stay regionally connected and informed, and to continue his regular communications with the council, which he does really well with." All right, "Council evaluation then included what the city manager's priorities should be for the next twelve months, and they include the COVID response, facilitating vaccine access when it becomes available, implementation of the housing task force recommendations, addition of more electric vehicle chargers at large parks in the community center, organic garbage plan, which will be mandatory for residents coming up by, what, January one, twenty-twenty-two? Uh, city's strong financial position and city services while keeping a tight handle on the budget, and keep doing an exceptional job, including retention of key employees, the Southwest LRT implementation, safety following through with climate action plan, affordable housing initiative, communication marketing to residents so they stay fully informed, and any new directives or initiatives from the council in twenty-twenty-one." Just one more paragraph, "Each member of the council praised Mr. Getchell's excellent performance and reiterated the, that Eden Prairie is lucky, fortunate, I'm not sure it's luck, but, uh, we definitely are fortunate to have an exceptional city manager. The council discussed Mr. Getchell's salary in light of this excellent performance, and that his performance merited a salary increase. After discussion of the limits on what the city can pay, and there are limits because of state statute, we're the only state in the United States of America that limits the salaries of municipal government employees to a certain percentage above the governor's salary." Now, you may say that's a good thing, the bad thing is that it's difficult to attract the high-quality people like Mr. Getchell, it's difficult to keep him, and the problem is the other states around us, um, he could go and make fifty percent more or double, I shouldn't say that out loud, you might be thinking about that, but we, it's difficult to hang on to really quality people because of this salary cap. But with that in mind, the council was determined to increase Mr. Getchell's salary to the maximum that he could be paid under the law, which is not that significant in my mind. "Council determined to increase Mr. Getchell's salary retroactively for twenty-twenty up to the salary cap, which is a hundred and eighty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and to provide him with additional hours of paid PTO to be placed in a dedicated account that cannot be converted to cash until he leaves employment with the city, for a total compensation package of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for twenty-twenty. For twenty-twenty-one, his salary will be increased to the new salary cap, which has not been set yet by the legislature, and he will receive additional hours of paid PTO in the same dedicated amount for a total compensation of approximately two hundred and five thousand in twenty-twenty-one. The council invited Mr. Getchell back into the meeting, shared this evaluation of his performance and salary determination. The mayor and council members rea- reiterated to Mr. Getchell that everyone is extremely pleased with his performance." Council, is there anything else, I think that's pretty, um, explanatory, but anything else that anyone would like to add? Uh, councilmember Nelson, are you good?
Yes, no, I'm good, he's a great city manager.
Yes, we all agree with that. I believe that's all I need to do with this, um, item, was just to report out, is that correct, um, um, Maggie?
Yeah, hold on, uh, there should be a motion for the salary.
Okay, we don't have that in our packet, so...
Yes, I provided it to you along with the, the, the performance summary, um, in the email.
Okay, well, I think we, I, we can make it off of this, so what needs to be made? The, the two salary numbers?
Yes, and we, we have those two salary numbers now, so the, um, let me-
Do you want to read them, and someone can say they'll move what you read?
Sure, um, so you'd increase retroactively, excuse me, I realize I don't have my video on, apologize.
To one hundred and ninety thousand with the one eighty-five four fifty-seven to be salary cap for twenty-twenty, and the rest into paid PTO, correct?
Uh, yes, and the number is actually slightly lower, about five dollars because of a quirk of the payroll system.
Okay.
Um, how the time is entered, so, uh, the salary would increase retroactively for twenty-twenty to one eighty-five four fifty-two.
Okay.
And would provide an additional fifty-six hours of paid PTO in a dedicated account for a total twenty-twenty compensation of approximately one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then for twenty-twenty-one, the salary would increase by one point two percent, uh, to one eighty-seven six seventy-eight, and we'd provide an additional one hundred and ninety-two hours of paid PTO in the same dedicated account for total twenty-twenty-one compensation of approximately two hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay, um, is there a motion that someone would move what, um, our attorney just read?
So moved.
Uh, we'll give that to councilmember Nelson, and then a second to-
Second.
Councilmember Narayan. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favors?
No, roll call.
Oh, roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Aho.
I just, I had it down, you know? Go ahead.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. Mr. Getchell, we, um, truly are thrilled with you being here, we believe we have, uh, the finest, uh, city manager in the state of Minnesota, I mean that, um, you come with, um, glowing accolades, and, um, something that one of the council members said, I forget who, I think we all agree with it, is that when we go to regional meetings and people say, oh, who's your city manager, and we say Rick Getchell, and they say, oh, he's the best, I mean, we just hear from others, um, your peers even, who just so deeply respect you, so we feel very fortunate to have you here, uh, we'd like to keep you, we hope that you're happy, it sounds like from what you told back to us that you are, um, and I just think it's a good win-win for the people of Eden Prairie, for us as a council, and then I hope for you as well. Uh, any comments that you want to add to that?
Uh, Mayor, the previous mayor never let me speak, um, after my review, so, no, I, um, I, I think everything, everything is about the, the people you work with and surround yourself with, that, that's the key to success, so I'd like to thank everyone who, who's affiliated with working for this, this entire community- So I'd like to thank everyone who's affiliated with working for this entire community and those elected officials and those people that live and work in the community. Makes this job much, much easier.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. All right, we're going to move to the other business, awarding the contract, and then come back, as I said, to the reports of council members. So, Mr. Getchow, do you want to intro this item?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and council members. You asked that this be brought back to the next council meeting from the previous council meeting. So really quickly, I don't want to rehash the presentation that was done this summer, but in June, I think it was, council meeting in June, council consensus was to ask that. I work with the Human Rights and Diversity Commission and come back at the following meeting or a meeting after that with some thoughts and ideas and a plan related to race equity. And so at that time, I provided a presentation that really focused on six areas of inquiry. Again, this is through discussion with city staff and with the HRDC Commission. In the six areas of inquiry, three of the areas really cover the operations of the city, the city government, how people assess our programs, what they think about our emergency response, city hiring and recruitment. The other three areas of inquiry are more community-wide, they're citywide. It has to do with how people feel connected in Eden Prairie, what their experience is in Eden Prairie, and also how future leaders can be developed in Eden Prairie. One component of that was involving some consulting services. And I say, I think it's important to note that the project that was presented at that time, and I think I said it at that time, was to be led by the Human Rights and Diversity Commission with some assistance by a consultant, not led by a consultant or done by a consultant. But the HRDC Chair and staff liaison and myself and the HR Manager interviewed, I believe it was at least four different firms that can provide some services to supplement what the HRDC would do. And in that proposal, has been in the last two packets, and the majority of the work of the $49,000 is really split in half. Half of the funding is to be a third-party facilitator for deep listening and community conversation, and the other half is mainly data analysis, best practice analysis, and reporting, and a lot of work related to what this company has done nationally on this issue, and that's in the proposal. The HRDC has already begun their work. They have had two or three meetings where they have formed subcommittees on each of those six areas, so they've already begun the work, and the consultant would come in within the next month and provide some assistance. You know, I will say, and this is completely up for council conversation, you can see how they break down, you know, pretty much each hour of the work that they're going to do, and obviously, we haven't talked to them about changing that, but if that needed to be altered, that's a conversation we could have. And also, I just want to make the point that it was the plan of the commission to continue with the work, you know, regardless of if there was a consultant or not, but they felt and staff agreed that some third-party expertise in this area would be helpful in putting a plan together in 2021. So that's, that, Mayor, is kind of a quick overview of what's in the packet.
So, Council, we pulled this from the last meeting primarily because we had a two-two split at the time, and we pulled it so we could talk about it tonight. So would you like, how would you like to handle this? Would you like to have individual time, each of us? Would you, would you want me to open up randomly? Should I just go down the line, or would you like to start?
Yeah, if you'd like to start. During the meeting last time, the reason I approached it the way I did is I just wanted more transparency on it. I wanted to know more about the purpose, the clarification, what we're trying to accomplish. I believe Mr. Getchow helped me out in that respect right there, because that's what I had to hear, is that what is the purpose for us to spend this money? And by filling in the blanks that you did there, I could go along with that.
Should I go down the line? Councilmember Aho.
Yeah, I guess it is helpful to hear the explanation of how the money will be spent. I personally feel that the city of Eden Prairie has done an exemplary job of making sure that we are not doing anything that is racist or not equal, and, you know, we've lived by the Eden Prairie Manifesto from before I was elected in 2004. And so I feel that, you know, we as a city, as city leadership, as city staff, we've really done a great job in, you know, trying to make sure that we are not judging anyone by, you know, by racial standards. And so I think that if we're going to spend, you know, $49,900, personally, I think it would be, I'd rather see that money going to something that it was really furthering, furthering work with the races that live in Eden Prairie and, you know, and developing some concrete things instead of doing consulting. But I do understand that the Human Rights and Diversity Commission would like to have some leadership in that regard, and I do understand, I guess. So I'm, again, I'd rather see us spending on something else, but I can go along with it.
Councilmember Narayan.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you, Rick Getchow, for the explanation. I did read the proposal twice. It's like somebody was saying, very detailed proposal, and we did ask the Human Rights and Diversity Commission to look at this, and looking at the, all the different things they're going to do, analysis, it, I think it's very difficult for our city staff to do themselves and to get a good quality level. So I personally believe we do need help, and I trust the city staff that we picked the right contract, the right vendor here, and I think it's important. Many times, we don't know if something, we feel that something's happening good, but we are not sure. So outside, somebody looking from outside, unbiased, asking questions and analyzing it, that will open it up, the possibilities, and I think, because of all the reasons, I think we have to have an outside help, and I believe the staff picked the right vendor to do that, and seems like they're very credible, and I personally approve the spending here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, because of the Eden Prairie Manifesto and the city's law wish to be a place where every citizen can live and be respected, I think that with the request from the Human Rights and Diversity Commission to look into what all society is looking into to make sure it really is a fair situation, and I think there are things that can be done to do it better, but we have this long responsibility that we've taken on to make sure that it is important to everybody and that everybody is respected. So I'm very much in favor of this. I think that this will, we've asked them to do a job, and I believe this will help it to it, and I believe with respect for every citizen in Eden Prairie, we need to do our very best job.
So I went out online, and, thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Thank you, all of you, for sharing. I went out online and I just pulled some data facts off the internet. I think it's systemic racism is an interesting conversational topic in that depending on the color of your skin, the perceptions can be so different. I have never, I've tried this out, the last, literally, the last 10 or 12 conversations I've had with some of my African-American friends, I've asked them, when a police officer, and we have great police officers in this city, but when a police officer comes up behind them, a squad car, what's their first thought? Because I think of myself, my first thought is, oh, my gosh, I'm going to get a ticket, my heart's beating, I'm nervous, but I'm not worried about getting shot. But I 100% had African-American people tell me that's their first thought. There's something in that, right? There's some systemic issue that has created a situation that one can come up with all the excuses and understandings that may or may not be right, but have we asked Black and Brown people to share their perceptions of is there systemic racism? Because I don't think I'm the right guy to answer that for them. I went out and pulled some data. The average non-white school district receives $2,226 less per student in this nation. Now, you can say, well, it's the neighborhoods, or that's the tax base. Okay, fine, whatever. What's underneath that, though? Compared with white Americans, Black Americans are two to three times more likely to die during childbirth. Again, you can say it's the neighborhoods they live in, the hospitals they go to, but it's also the amount of wealth that somehow over the generations has not accumulated. Case in point is that Black Americans are more likely to be turned down for mortgages and are dramatically less likely to own homes, which is partly why Black American families have 90% less wealth than white families. That's a statistic that just can't be pushed aside by, oh, it's the individuals, it's something wrong with, it's like blaming the victim, it's something wrong with them. Black-owned businesses are twice as likely to be denied loans as those owned by white people. Up to 95% of Black-owned businesses may have been shut out of the federal government's recent paycheck protection program. And then finally, besides being twice as likely to be killed by police, Black Americans are more likely to be stopped by police, and there's data on that. Detained pre-trial, charged with more serious crimes, and be sentenced more harshly than white people. So when the George Floyd murder occurred, it really was an inflection point in society that I think challenged every state, every county, every municipality to reflect, to do the hard work of looking at themselves. I agree with Councilmember Aho. I think we're the best of the best when it comes to what so many things we do. That doesn't mean, though, that if you're a Black or Brown person living in Eden Prairie, that you're not experiencing something that we white people of white privilies just are missing. That's what I want to find out. That's what I really was hoping, and I believe will happen, that our Human Rights and Diversity Commission will have the opportunity to convene the conversations, and I think we needed an outside group to pull in Black and Brown people in Eden Prairie and others. We need to ask everyone. We need to know a white person's perspective as well, but we really need to get the voices of everyone, and I think it takes an outside group to be able to do that. And that's really what this, if, you know, I think we all had a chance to read in our packet, I'll be the first to admit, I don't read every single line of the 300 pages, and I was not as prepared at the last meeting, but if, I'm sure we've all read it now, but, I mean, if you looked at it, they're convening the conversations, they're getting the right voices to the table, they're chronicling what they hear, they're developing a plan of action for us. I mean, I really think this is a wonderful group to be able to do that. And if you look at our $50 million budget, we do this kind of thing. We go out and get consultants when we have an area that, we have amazing staff, but when we have an area that, whether it's some type of construction or some type of solar, you know, financing or something, we go get the experts. In some cases, we'll bring in a consultant firm. We do that a lot. This isn't, I mean, not a lot to the extent that we waste taxpayer money, the exact opposite. I think we bring in strategically to help us do our job better. So I think this is the right thing to do. I appreciate very much that others have looked at this and given it some deep thought. So, let's see, Mr. Getchow, do we want, do you want to say anything? Do we want to go ahead and vote? What are your thoughts?
I don't have anything more to add unless you have questions, but you do need to approve the contract if you want to move ahead.
Councilmember Narayan.
I'll move the motion.
Okay, but, Mr. Getchow, at the very end, you said we could do that, but I missed that. You said we could go through the contract, but we certainly don't have to.
No, I said you just need to vote.
Oh, yes, okay. Councilmember Narayan.
I move to authorize entering into contract with the D Young Consulting Services for Race and Equity Consultation from November 2020 through August 2021 at cost not to exceed $49,900.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. All right, we've come to the last agenda item, that's Councilmember Reports, I believe it's the last, am I right in that?
You are.
Okay. And, Mr., Councilmember Aho, you wanted to have the floor and make a statement, and just to remind people out in the audience everywhere, this is Councilmember Aho's last council meeting this evening, and we're all a little bit sad, so go ahead and have the floor.
Well, thank you. It's really hard to believe that this is my last city council meeting after having served for 16 years. I've really thoroughly enjoyed serving the people of Eden Prairie, and I'm humbled and honored that the people of this city have elected me four times. It has been a very rewarding and enjoyable part in my life in shaping our great city. We have had many visionary leaders that built strong foundation that we were able to add to that and make many improvements, like our community center with the Aquatic Center and the Three Ice Rinks. We have added to our athletic fields, fabulous parks and trails, and improved transportation with Southwest Transit and our roads and bridges. During my 16 years on the council, we have made many improvements in infrastructure as well as development and redevelopment changes that have added many jobs and amenities to our city. I am proud to have played a part in some regional projects like the I-494 Highway-169 interchange and the upcoming improvements to the I-494 35W interchange and additional lanes both directions on 494 between 169 and Highway 77 on the east. While serving on the Southwest Transit Board, we have added many services and innovations like Southwest Prime and Prime MD that serve our community's transportation needs. I am so impressed with the quality and caliber of people that live and work in Eden Prairie and how committed they are to making our city a great place to live, work, and dream, fulfilling our city motto. There is rarely a meeting that goes by without us receiving some donation of money, talent, or goods that improve our city from residents, businesses, and the fantastic service groups and churches. We are blessed to have many great service organizations like Rotary, Lions, Optimists, the Eden Prairie Community Foundation, just to name a few. The faith community here is especially strong, which helps guide and bind us together as a united community. The one thing that I will miss the most are the people I have worked with, and I am thankful and blessed to call friends. The city council is always changing, but I have enjoyed working with everyone on the council, and I will truly miss that. It has been an honor and a joy to work with our exceptional staff, and I would name them all, but we'd be here all night. So thanks to Rick Getchow, city manager, for managing our staff so well, and to all the great people that report to him. I truly appreciate all that you do to keep our city the number-one city in the nation. Being on the city council has been a big part of our lives, and I will miss the meetings and interactions with residents, businesses, organizations, and staff, but I will enjoy having more time to spend with my growing family and three young grandchildren. It will also allow me more time to focus on our small businesses and giving back to the community in new ways. Thank you to everyone who has supported me and been patient with me as I learned and grew into this position. I especially want to thank my wonderful wife, Bev, for all of her help, support, encouragement, and love. I would not be here if it wasn't for her. I hope to see you all as we are out and about in this great community, and thank you. And my wife, Bev, is here tonight, and as well as my parents and Bev's mother as well, so thank you for all being here. I appreciate that.
Let's give them an applause now, but we're not done. Standing ovation momentarily, so just relax here a bit. So I do have a follow-up to that, and I do have a proclamation that I'm going to read. It's got a lot of the whereas's in there.
Uh-oh.
So, whereas Brad Aho served the city of Eden Prairie as council member from 2005 through 2020, and whereas Councilmember Aho served the city on several boards and commissions, including the I-494 Corridor Commission, you're checking here to make sure we get them all, Southwest Transit Board, Southwest Suburban Cable Commission, Flying Cloud Joint Airport Zoning Board, did we miss any for now? Whereas Councilmember Aho was involved for many years with several community athletic activities, including the Eden Prairie Fox Jet Swim Team, the ski racing teams at Buck Hill, and is it Gilboa? I'm not a skier. And the Eden Prairie Hockey Association. And whereas Councilmember Aho prom- And whereas councilmember Aho promoted the local business community, a robust transportation infrastructure, and the city's sustainability efforts. And whereas councilmember Aho advocated, this shouldn't be a hard word, advocated for a strong city parks and recreation system for the benefit of all residents, including significant additions to the community center and encouraging new amenities such as the Art Center and Staring Lake Observatory. And whereas councilmember Aho supported providing high-level services at a reasonable cost and with minimal tax impact to residents. And whereas councilmember Aho represented all sectors of Eden Prairie regardless of political, religious, or other affiliation. And whereas councilmember Aho played a significant role in making Eden Prairie a vibrant city by supporting initiatives to ensure government accessibility, community safety, and economic success. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that councilmember Aho is recognized for 16 years of dedicated commitment to the city of Eden Prairie and further. Eden Prairie City Council does hereby proclaim December 1st, 2020, as Brad Aho Day in the city of Eden Prairie, and asks the community to join us in thanking councilmember Aho for his public service adopted by the city council this first day of December 2020. Ronald Wade Case, Mayor. And Brad, if you can, I will give you this. We can't really shake hands, we can elbow here, but here's a proclamation that I just read that he can hang on as well. So congratulations, and we're not quite done yet, but go ahead and have a seat there. So I asked the council ahead of time if they wished, and I believe a couple did prepare a few comments. Councilmember Nelson, do you want us to start with you maybe since, well, you're not here? So you're-
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
No, Brad, I'd like to thank you. You spent hours and hours on the 494 Commission and on Southwest Transit, and you've represented the city well, and you've had a lot of good things that have come out of those. And I would like to thank you for all the hours you've spent and how well you've represented us on those groups, sharing both of them at times. So, thank you, Brad. Everybody will miss you, but I hope you have also some of the extra time for your grandchildren you want.
Councilmember Narayan.
Brad, congratulations. I think I've known you around 10 years. And you actually appointed me to the Human Right and Diversity Commission first time, and that kind of path got me here. We're going to, I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss you, but I'm going to see you in the Am Ro tree, and I don't know what exactly going to happen in Southwest, but, you know, Brad and I are part of the Southwest Commission. And, you know, your passion in public transportation is amazing. And today downstairs, when you were talking to the senator and other people, you can see that. So, good work, great. We're going to miss you, and congratulations, and enjoy with the grandchildren. Thank you.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Oh, Brad, Brad, Brad.
That's, this is scary, huh?
Prior to being elected in 2018, you think back a little bit, I spent two years pretty much in that seat, that vacant seat right there, just observing. And there was an importance to that, because I watched, I took notes, and during that period of time, I grew to know you as a friend, a confident man, a man of integrity and courage, and later, a man of faith also, some just amazing qualities you have, and someone that I wanted to work with as a future council member. I've been blessed to have these last two years of being able to do that. And, you know, and I've learned from you. I am going to greatly miss you as far as, as a colleague. And again, I'm grateful for that time, my friend, and I'm wishing you the best.
Thank you. All right. Brad. So we've shared 14 of, I believe, your 16 years together on this city council. 14 years that we attended together, I believe, over 250 city council meetings, hundreds of Southwest Metro Transit, LMC, NLC, MLC, and region-elected official gatherings, 14 years of socializing in each other's houses, traveling together to municipal government leadership conferences and spending hours on the phone calls. We've also campaigned against each other in four elections, in a way, ran together, I guess, a couple, debated in formal settings a dozen times and had many, many conversations of agreement and disagreement in public here in this council chamber. And even though we have consistently disagreed on some specific issues that primarily relate to national policies, I would bet that 99.9% of the time, we voted exactly the same as we both have worked to improve Eden Prairie, better the lives of our residents, and leave our community a little better than we found it. So you should feel extremely proud of your service to the people of Eden Prairie. And on behalf of all of our residents as mayor, I want to officially acknowledge the positive contributions that you've made to our city over the last 16 years, and we wish you, Bev, and your growing family the very best over the years to come. Now, I believe a standing ovation's in order.
It's truly been an honor, and I really enjoyed it. And, you know, it's just been a great privilege to be a part of this organization, to be part of such a wonderful city that has achieved so much in both locally and statewide and nationally. And I just, I just feel that Eden Prairie is in such a good place, and I'm leaving it in good hands. And I know our newly-elected city councilmember, Alisa Tumi, who was here tonight earlier, is she still here? Still here, yes, will do a great job in filling this seat, and I look forward to seeing more, more great things come out of the city council.
Thank you. Would you like to move to adjourn the city council meeting this evening?
I would. I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second? This city council meeting tonight, December 1st, 2020, is now-
Roll call.
Ah, roll call. Of course, I would forget it on the last one.
Councilmember Aho.
Yes, proceed.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye. This meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.